Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, April 3rd, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Tell me more, Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamen and second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda this morning is a proclamation in recognition of Henry County Industry Appreciation Week. This proclamation is naming the week of April 16th, 2012, as Industry Appreciation Week in Henry County, Georgia. Whereas industry in Henry County is one of the cornerstones in the foundation of our strong diversified economic base, and whereas Henry County's industries continue to contribute to the local quality of life through the creation of quality jobs and the innovation of new products and technologies, as well as the community service of our corporations and their employees, and whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners would like to join the Henry County Development Authority and the Henry County Chamber of Commerce in recognizing the pioneering history, resilient spirit, and sustained economic impact of manufacturing and industry in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of April 16th, 2012 shall be known as Henry County Industry Appreciation Week to coincide with the Governor's statewide proclamation of Georgia Manufacturing Appreciation Week. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners wishes to express its appreciation for the vital contributions these industries have made in our community this third day of April 2012 by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And I believe we have some representatives here this morning from the Development Authority, Ms. Vicky Loper, who is the Chairman of the Board, and Leah, you're here on Bob's behalf, I assume. Would you like to say something before we present the proclamation, Vicky?
I would just like to thank you, BJ, and the Board of Commissioners for this proclamation and for all of your support in helping us to attract new industries and businesses and new jobs to our community. We've been very fortunate, even in the economic downturn, that we have been able to attract new businesses and industries and grow our market. So, thank you again for your support. We appreciate it.
Now, Vicky, I just, and I maybe caught you off-guard here. I know in the last few years, we've added several hundred jobs. Do you know the total of what those would be? Because I know with the Whirlpool and In-Lime Plastics and different ones, we've seen some job growth.
Well, I'm actually going to defer to Leah for that. Leah, can you help?
Unfortunately, I don't know the total, but we can get that information for you.
I think that would be very interesting to share with the citizens, just to let them know how hard the Development Authority has been working and how successful Henry County has been in respect to that.
Thank you.
Great. If y'all would step over here, we'd like to get a photograph. Mr. Holder, you had some comments you'd like to share?
I do. While Vicky and Leah are still here.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I know this is for new jobs and new businesses coming in, but we also need to be mindful of the fact of many of the old businesses that are still here.
Yes, sir.
That have provided employment to many of our citizens for so long. Some of the first ones that come to mind would be Snapper, McDonough Power Equipment, Snapper Power Equipment, Southern States in Hampton. Those are industries that have been here for fifty-plus years.
Yes, sir.
And have provided employment and stability for the local economy here for many generations. And I just wanted to recognize that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are great. We're very thankful that we have those industries. And Leah works hard with our existing industries, Warren and Matt's here. Good point.
We need to continue to get new businesses, but we don't need to forget those who are already here too.
Yes, we appreciate them very much. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is request for approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education regarding Smart Bus. Our presenter is Andy Welch, Attorney for the Henry County Board of Education, and that's exhibit number four.
Thank you. He's here.
Okay, Andy is not here.
Is that him coming in?
Right.
While he's coming in, actually, I need to take this opportunity to probably recuse myself. I was, as many of you know, I was the Chairman of the Board of Education before I came to the Board of Commissioners. So, I worked on both sides of this, so it's probably in the best interest if I recuse myself from this issue.
And before you do that, we'll give him a moment when he gets in here to kind of collect his thoughts. Let's move on to the public safety item first, and then we'll come back to that. Under public safety, we have a resolution requesting authorization to accept a donation from the Fairview Civic Club. Our presenter is Chief Keith Nichols of the Police Department, and that's exhibit number five. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Over the last several years, the Fairview Civic Club has donated money to public safety. We have been the recipient of several donated funds by the Fairview Civic Club, and we graciously have accepted and appreciate that. Some of the items that we've purchased with these funds, small equipment such as laptops, we've purchased heated riding clothing for our motorcycle unit, which my hat's off to them because they ride in inclement weather and very cold weather. Recently, Commissioner Holmes has guided us in a direction up in Fairview to an area, the old Publix Shopping Center, and we're in that area right now. And one of the last items that we need is a printer, copier, fax machine to help us be fully functional in that unit. And thankfully, Mr. Darrell Walker, who is the President of that organization, as of March 1st donated another $5,000. And with that, if y'all see fit, that we accept this donation, we're going to get that printer, copier, fax machine, so that those funds will be recycled up in the Fairview area. So, come before you and ask you that you authorize and grant the acceptance of that $5,000 donation from the Fairview Civic Club.
Well, I've never known this board to turn away money.
I know I'm twisting y'all's arm.
Out here, I might add. Out here in official county business, so I needed to clarify that. Does any Board member have a question? Mr. Holmes?
First of all, I want to say thank you to the Fairview Civics Club for their donation. It's definitely helpful. I want to say thank you to Keith as well. We did move the new police station down to the Publix Plaza, and all we've seen was crime trending downward. So, it's trending in the right direction. So, with this type of donation, it helps us move forward, and also it helps public safety continue to do their job in our community. So, again, I want to say thank you to you and thank you to the Civics Club as well. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Mr. Stamen?
Keith, I don't know if anybody here is from the Civics Club is here, but how many years have they actually donated?
I believe this is the fifth year in a row that they've donated, and obviously, I'm not a great mathematician, but that's $25,000. And that's of great help to us, and usually what we buy with that is small equipment, which is anything over $100 and has a lifespan over a year. So, that helps us greatly. I know one year, I think back when Chief Abernathy was here, we bought a FLIR unit, which stands for Forward-looking Infrared Device. So, in the past, if we had somebody run into the woods, we just kind of stood there and used dogs. But now, we're able to use this thermal imaging device that picks up any kind of heat sources. So, that was an item, I think, the first time we ever got this donation that we bought, and it's helped us greatly. And I remember the little demonstration that we had of it. But my hat's off to Mr. Walker. He, you know, I almost look forward to his call or anticipate his call, and we actually have, the last several years in a row, we've accepted the donation at his request at Glenhaven Baptist Church where we have our monthly breakfast. So, thanks to Glenhaven. I think there's a few representatives from Glenhaven here today, but to allow us that opportunity to receive that check.
Well, that's another organization that's been very generous to not only our Police Department, but our Fire Department, Glenhaven, consistently meeting the needs of public safety. So, we certainly appreciate, we certainly appreciate our partners' public safety.
Very much so. And I'll just add, without our partners, we couldn't do it. It's vital to have those partnerships.
Does any other Board member have a question or comment? Mr. Holder?
I do. I know in the previous meeting, we talked about the Fairview Civic Club and their generosity, not just to public safety, but they've participated in the outdoor classroom program at the various reservoirs throughout the county to provide education facilities for the young fifth-grade kids that attend that, as well as the public. But they have been most generous in many areas throughout the county in their contributions.
Yes, sir.
Any other Board member with a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the acceptance of the donation in the amount of $5,000 from Fairview Civic Club on entertaining motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, we are going to back up. I see Mr. Welch has arrived. The request for approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education regarding the Smart Bus, and again, that's exhibit number four. And Mr. Preston, of course, has stated that he would recuse himself from this matter. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. The request before you is an intergovernmental agreement between the School Board and the Board of Commissioners, the Sheriff, and the Solicitor. Under state law, there is a code section that allows for the school to, school system to contract with a vendor to place cameras on buses so that they can detect when a vehicle has passed them illegally, typically at a school bus stop where they're picking up children. You've probably read in the newspapers fairly recently, where in Cobb County, a child was struck, and this has happened last year as well, which created legislation last year, which was adopted by General Assembly. The agreement that you have here, that code section particularly allows for the Board of Education to contract out with other governmental agencies to offset the cost of the equipment and the process. In this particular agreement between the School Board and the vendor, the fine is $300 if someone breaks the law and passes a school bus. And that fine would go to the coffers of the county, less an amount under this agreement that would be paid to the vendor for providing the camera, the photographic evidence showing the violation. And that information is then transmitted to the Sheriff's Department where the law enforcement officer will sign off on the citation, citations issued. The vendor will mail that out to the person that's alleged to have created the violation. That person can remit the fee back to, the fine, sorry, to the county. It will go to the clerk's office, the court system, then it goes back to you all. Under this agreement that the School Board has negotiated with the vendor, it's $195 per citation, civil penalty paid. So, it's not done on the citations issued, it's on the actual payment received. So, the $195 will go to the vendor, and the remainder will stay in the county as part of its revenue. And that should offset the administrative costs associated with the sheriff's personnel reviewing the photographic evidence. And if there's a need to, the solicitor prosecuting the case, but I think most of these, most of these civil penalties will be paid out by the issuance of the citation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them, but this is an intergovernmental agreement that cooperates with the Board of Education to achieve that end.
Mr. Bowman?
I have a couple, Mr. Welch. We, $300 and the vendor's going to get $195, which, you know, leaves $105. Does that cover the cost of the solicitor, the court, the sheriff's time, the photos? That $105 cover that?
No, sir. It doesn't cover the photographs and the, and I won't be able to answer your question as to whether or not it would cover the cost of the solicitor or the sheriff's time, the, until we tried it. The current contract that the Board of Education has negotiated with the vendor is a Phase One, Phase Two project. The initial project is to begin at the end of the school session so that it would last through the end of April and then into May. So, that would give us an opportunity to see how that's working, and also to see what costs that you're, you know, incurring on your end. So, that will be helpful in diagnosing what we need to do next year. If the system is working, there's no need to amend the contracts, then next year, it automatically will begin for next school session and go through that school, that school year. But to tell you what the costs are going to be associated with it, I certainly don't know. I don't represent those entities that are involved in this. We've talked with the Solicitor's Office, we've talked with the Sheriff's Office, we've talked with your council here at the Board of Commissioners, and it's going to be one of those where we'll have to see what that cost translates into. But in experience with, from the vendor's perspective, the vendor has talked about to us that their experience is that most of the citations that are paid, generally a speeding, no different than a speeding ticket, most of them are just someone gets the citation, the photographic evidence is attached, there's their car with the license plate showing on the photograph. So, what happens is the person, rather than contesting the issue, submits the $300 check. Now, there will be occasion when some of these are contested, typically in the instance where someone else is driving the vehicle. And that may be an instance where it would be contested. And that, and that in discussions with the county attorney and the solicitor, those may be adjusted in terms of the fine, and may be waived and dismissed. So, there may be some of those where there is some action on the part of the Solicitor's Office.
Well, the other thing, and you may have just answered it, you said it's going to be a, the red light cameras actually take a picture of the front facial.
Mm-hmm.
As well as the license plate. Will these cameras do the same thing?
These cameras, I don't think will be taking the front facial. I think they're taking just the rear of the car as it goes by, because it won't, it's not triggered until the car comes out. But I can't answer the question whether it takes the front picture of the person. From the descriptions, the discussions we've had, they've indicated that really it's only taking the tail end of the car passing by. So, that's, that's the situation with that camera.
I also read there was opt-out for each, for the, actually, the School Board probably wouldn't want to opt-out, but the, there's an opt-out for the, for the vendor as well.
Yes.
If I read that correctly, that, that was, and I understand, and I think the question would be from guys like myself that have a number of shop trucks that almost anybody if, you know, and hopefully, none of them would pass a school bus with a stop sign out, you know? But it would be interesting because we wouldn't, you know, I suppose we could find out who's driving it, but at the end of the day, we really don't know. So, just getting a rear photo of a, you know, that's a little bit. I, I don't have a problem with it, I just, I'm concerned with the cost factor, whether or not that, you know, that the budgets would go up with the Police Department having to deal with it, and the budget with the solicitors may have to go up if they have to deal with it. And I understand what you're saying, most of the time, they're going to pay it. Is there a huge amount from our bus drivers of being passed illegally? Do you know that from the School Board? Have we heard that?
Yeah, there has been an incidence, not on all routes. These are on the higher, more high-traffic routes, more the northern part of the county where you're seeing people in high-traffic areas trying to bypass a school because they're trying to get to work. So, you'll see them pass a school bus or fail to stop. When the school bus is stopped, the lights are on, the alarm starts to come out, and they whiz by. So, in those situations, that's what we're trying to stop. And, you know, the, the county PD is not involved in this particular arrangement, it's only with the Sheriff. And the vendor is going to transmit the evidence to the sheriff's, the designated sheriff's person, personnel that will then review that evidence. If it is, from the photographic evidence, a violation, then they will sign off on the certificate or the citation. The vendor then sends that over. So, really, it's a matter of just a few minutes of looking at the evidence, determining whether it was a violation. Then, the vendor will then send off the information to the person that's alleged to have violated it. A copy goes to the Solicitor's Office, and when payment's made, the files are shut down. If it's not, that's, that's how this is going to work. So, it's going to be fairly seamless, is the intent here, to make it seamless. And the higher cost factor that you see there at $195, which is 105 less than the total civil penalty, that is there to ensure that no governmental agency is on the hook for anything that's not paid for. So, this is only on those citations where they have been paid. Now, we'll be up at the Solicitor's Office to make sure that they collect, you know, that they don't reduce the amount from 300. But that's a burden on the Solicitor's Office that we hope that they will do that, fully enforce the civil penalty and collect, and then as a result, collect the check and remit that to the county. So, I think this first phase, where we can see how many citations are issued, what the revenue stream is, and that gives us a month and a half to test that market, I think is a prudent step. And then from that, we can better assess what our costs are, and if we need to go look at that number again, as terms of the vendor's remittance, then we probably will do that next year. That's where it stands there. It isn't out, you're right, the vendor hasn't out, that is, if there is no revenue, if we're not seeing any revenue stream coming in, generally, people are well-behaved. Hopefully, the public will become aware, both through this meeting, through newspaper articles that have since run, that these cameras exist and that hopefully will curb the incidence of people violating the school bus stop. You know, the ultimate goal here is simply just to protect the safety of the schoolchildren, and that's, and that's what we're trying to do here, and that's the ultimate goal. Revenue is not the goal here, the revenue, the protection of the schoolchildren is what we're looking at. And that's why the Board of Education is collecting no revenue whatsoever from this. All revenue that can be collected is here to offset the Sheriff and the Solicitor's Office.
What are the school systems doing with this technology?
Cobb County is looking at this. They have contacted me and discussed this with me through the Board of Education, because we were talking about doing this here. Newton County is currently considering this as well. So, it's basically the metro Atlanta counties where you have a higher incidence of traffic and then obviously violators. So, that's, that's where we're seeing it. Gwinnett County is also considering. So, we're seeing this progress, but it's in a stepwise manner.
What's holding them back from actually making a decision to move forward with it? It seems like everybody's considering it, but nobody has moved forward.
Right now, Cobb County is, they're still negotiating whether they're going to do it in-house or whether they're going to do a vendor, a private company to do it. So, that was, that was my last conversation with them. They were, they were thinking they could do all of this in-house. So, buy the cameras, mount them on the school buses, and then also try to set up the program data that would then translate the information taken from the camera, which includes GPS data, because it has to, they have to designate the location of the school bus, so you know where the incident occurred. And in some cases, that may be inside a city, in which case, the city would have to prosecute that, not, not the county. So, it varies. But I have not talked to Gwinnett, and Newton County is just now considering it. That's what I had heard from their last meeting.
Mr. Stamen?
Mr. Welch, when this was first sent over to us a couple of months ago, there was a clause put in there between a split between the BOE and the BLC. Has that has totally been removed?
I don't, yes, there is no, there is no cost sharing between the BOE and the BLC. All revenues, all additional revenues above the $195 that goes, remitted back to the vendor, all of that goes here to the Board of Commissioners. It will go through the court system, but ultimately winds up here.
Okay. Is that all? Mr. Holder?
I see there's a 60-day opt-out clause, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Other question, as far as the Sheriff is concerned. I'm assuming the reason the Sheriff is the agency or the department that you would go to is because he has powers throughout, within the cities, without, outside the cities.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If, if an incident occurred within the city, would it go to municipal court within the respective city?
It would.
Then at that point, where does the revenue go?
At that point, since it's prosecuted within the city, we don't, first of all, we don't have an intergovernmental agreement with any city prosecuting agency at this point. So, this is really just trying to test this in the county at this particular time. So, we don't have that intergovernmental agreement. If they were to be prosecuted in municipal court, which pending state law, then that would, then what would happen is that would be prosecuted in municipal court, and the, and the revenues would go there.
Okay. But back to the question of the Sheriff, is that the reason the Sheriff was chosen? Because?
The, the primary reason the Sheriff was chosen is because the school system already has a relationship with the Sheriff through the SROs.
For the resource.
Yes, sir. So, that was, we already have a Sheriff's Deputy that works with the school system, so it was easier to go ahead and use, let that person be the contact between the vendor on behalf of the School Board. That was the only reason.
Okay. And the, I guess, maybe my final question, not comment, but final question would be, have you spoken to the Sheriff to see if he would need any additional personnel, anything to monitor these? And he says no?
We've, we've sent all this, all the documentation you have has been sent to each participant. So, it's been, it's been to the Solicitor, it's been to the Sheriff, and they have the resources with the current SROs to do that. So, there would be no additional personnel that they need.
That's good.
And that, we try to keep this very simple. As I've said before, the, you know, the point of this is to do two phases, which you've seen in the arrangement between the BOE and the, and the vendor, is to try to test this out and see how this works over the remainder of the school year. So, I think that's going to help us get a perspective on how effective it is. And certainly, we, we need to hear from you all and from your county attorney, from Ms. Wiley, the Solicitor, from the Sheriff's Department on how this is working. Because whatever bugs are there, we want to work them out so that it's effective and that we're collecting a revenue stream that offsets the cost of administration and to the greatest extent possible. But we're, our ultimate goal here is to put the public on notice that if they're going to pass a school bus when they should not, there's a high likelihood that they will be cited for doing so, and the penalty of $300 is quite stiff.
My final comment is this. Child safety is of the utmost importance. We talk about, is it going to be cost-effective to do this or not? The loss of one child by somebody running a stop sign, and ladies and gentlemen, everybody here has probably witnessed it at one point in time, that it does occur. There's no Police Department, no Sheriff's Department that is in business for profit. It's to provide public safety to whatever class of citizen. But in this case, child safety is most important, and we see where children have been run over, hit, in various other jurisdictions, it can happen here. And as far as the economics of it, that is something to consider, but that shouldn't be utmost in the consideration. The child's safety should be the utmost.
The, I think that it's, you know, Commissioner Holmes, the question that you had asked earlier, I think it's, it's important to note that, I think it's significant that Henry County Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners, the Solicitor, the Sheriff, I mean, we're all getting ahead of this. We have not had that tragic incident occur in Henry County. And, you know, hopefully, this will increase public awareness, and we will never have that incident occur. And I think that's, to me, that's a testament to the Board of Education. This was initiated when Commissioner Preston was on the Board of Education, working to look at this as a possible way to deter that particular traffic violation and to give greater protection to the children. So, I think this is, you know, we're being proactive, and I think that's a way you want to be. And the best part about this, in my mind, is that, you know, we're already strapped, both from a public safety perspective, it's near impossible for you to allocate resources for public safety personnel to follow school buses to try and track these incidences. You know, this is a, if it happens to be seen by an officer that happens to be in that particular area at that time, you, you know, you cite the offender. But at this, but with this technology, we're able to, you know, we're going to be able to- But with this technology, we're able to, you know, we're going to be able to photograph the offender, prosecute the case, if need be, if the fine's not paid, and ensure some protection and enforcement of those laws that we otherwise, really, I don't think are able to do.
Regarding Cobb County, what was their motivation to move forward and implement this process themselves?
Cobb County has not, they're still working through it. They were having some negotiations between their solicitor and their Board of Education. And they had, and the other issue was, they were, from what I was told from the Board of Education, was they were looking at whether or not to do it in-house. Whether they could put the cameras on, buy the cameras themselves, put them on the school buses, translate that photographic information into a data set that then could be translated into mailers, sent out to the sighting, to the offender. They were looking at doing that in-house, but I think as they start to look at it, they're going to start gobbling up personnel to administer that system. Whereas, the one-time payment per citation paid under this particular agreement, that arrangement means that you don't have to expend much of your administrative time, or much of your personnel, to do that.
Mr. Bowman.
Mr. Welch, just one other question. I know that the, that the school board has an opt-out, and the vendor has an opt-out. What about the county as a whole? Because I look at, and when you mention the fact that the, if it happens in the city, then that revenue stream, and we're not talking about, I'm not talking about making money, as Commissioner Holder so aptly applied that. I'm looking at actual cost as opposed to that. If that revenue, if a fair amount of it happens, then the budgets of our police and solicitor, you know, they'll be doing the work, and then, of course, the cities would be collecting. Hopefully, it's not going to be that much, but do we have, if we find in the future that this has turned into a, into too much of an issue for us budget-wise, do we have, as the board, do we have an opt-out?
The, currently, the way this is written is that there is a, you can always go back to that. I think the nature of intergovernmental agreements between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners has always been one of cooperation. If this is not working from an administrative standpoint, then you simply have to tell the Board of Education, this is not working, and this arrangement's not working, in which case, the Board of Education has the option to, you know, withdraw, renegotiate the terms of the contract at any time with the vendor. Furthermore, should the Board of Education decide to terminate the agreement with the vendor, then that automatically terminates your intergovernmental agreement. So there are mechanisms to allow us to get out of this particular situation. And we're going to know more after this month of April and May has transpired. We'll have more data that we can actually look forward and hopefully extrapolate out what that will be.
The intergovernmental agreement gives the county the absolute right to opt-out, regardless of what the BOE does, what its vendor. Section 2B of the contract, the county can give 60 days' notice that it does not want to continue in this intergovernmental agreement.
Yeah, that was a provision that we had included long before, to give any party the ability to get out. So that includes the solicitor or the sheriff. So if their agencies determine this is non-functional from their perspective, then they can get out. This is intended to be a cooperative agreement, an ability for the parties to try and effectuate better public safety, and also to offset some of the costs of that, if not all of it. But the cost savings will just be something we'll have to look at over time. But that's exactly right. And, you know, Ms. Wiley is not going to allow the Board of Commissioners to be in a binding position that does not give you the ability to weigh in on how it's impacting your bottom line. Now, as it pertains to the cities, I just want to be clear about this issue, because as it pertains to the cities, right now, those, as it stands right now, the law, we don't have the intergovernmental agreement with them, so there would not be necessarily a prosecution of those violations within a city. They may choose to do so, but that, the only resource that would be exposed to utilization by the cities would be the sheriff's review of the evidence, and the signature on, by the sheriff's officer, that then is transmitted out by the vendor to the offending party. So that, and should that arise, and that may be something to consider later on, but at this point, the Board of Education does not have an intergovernmental agreement with any of the cities to enforce.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I guess the good part, at the end of the day, it puts a pair of eyes exactly where our kids are most vulnerable, as they travel back and forth to school. Short of, I mean, this is the best thing we could do, versus putting a patrol car behind every bus, and we certainly can't do that. So we want to do everything we can to keep our kids safe. If there are no further questions from the board, you have before you an intergovernmental agreement with the Henry County Board of Education on this item, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, and a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 3-1 with Bowman, Holder, Stamey, and I will throw my vote in mathis in favor, and Mr. Holmes opposed. So it'd be 4-0, 4-1-0.
Madam Chairman, and members of the Commission, thank you for your questions. I think these are really on-point, targeted questions that need to be discussed. And thank you to Ms. Wiley for her time. I know that you all have been engaged in a lot of activities recently that has taken up your time, and she was kind enough to spend time to help us expedite getting this thing reviewed. And now we can take it back to the Board of Education, finalize it there, and have these cameras up and running within probably about two weeks. So thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Zoning Services, we have a public hearing, a request to amend Chapter 2, Zoning District Table 2.03.03 in Appendix A, master list of acronyms and definitions, and to create Chapter 4, Site Design Standards, Section 4.03.33 for the inclusion of a new land use category definition and supplemental standards for inert landfills. Our presenter is Stacy Jordan, Planning and Zoning, and it's Exhibit Number 6. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I'm before you today to discuss an ordinance amendment regarding inert landfills. And let me begin by saying that an inert landfill is different from what many people think of as a landfill, which would be a sanitary landfill. And to my knowledge, we actually have no sanitary landfills in Henry County. To be more specific, an inert landfill receives earth and earth-type waste materials, which may include concrete or asphalt. It also includes yard trimmings, such as limbs or leaves. It does not include general construction or demolition waste, which may be pieces of wooden studs, or pieces of wire, or other waste such as that. So, an inert landfill is just for earth and earth-type materials, including limbs and leaves and other yard trimmings, but not household waste, not business waste, and not general construction or demolition waste. The three sections of the code that you had mentioned in calling the case is, first of all, our chart, and we recommend that an inert landfill be allowed in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District, as well as the M1 and M2, which are the light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing industrial zoning districts. Also, we propose a definition for inert construction waste, and a brand-new Section 4.03.33, which lists these limitations and requirements. And I won't go through the entire text of the ordinance, but I would like to discuss it and to hit some important points. Letter B would require that a plat would be required to be approved, to be recorded, approved by the Environmental Compliance and Plan Review Department. And certain features would be required to be included on the plat. And one of those features would be number 13 in letter B, and that's the burial site location. One of the concerns that has been brought to my attention is that if a burial site is to be developed for building in the future, then we may need to regulate it differently than a burial site, which would be simply left as open space. And so what I would recommend is that a change be made to number 13, burial site location, to further require a notation that this burial site location is to be engineered or not engineered for future building development. Letter C excludes hazardous materials. Another issue that has been brought to my attention is, how will we know if hazardous materials or otherwise excluded items are placed in the landfill or not? And so we've attempted to address this location, or address this concern, rather, and require that the site be adequately secured, whether with personnel or with not, and also that when a burial site is proposed to be decommissioned, that before that is allowed, that there would be a geotechnical report and a copy of the inert landfill plat at the time of application for decommission. If a burial site is to be engineered for future building development, then an alternate plan must be included in a report of a geotechnical professional, and there's a notation that the yard trimming, stomps, limbs, leaves, and so forth are, must be excluded from a burial site for future building development. And also, as an additional safeguard, letter F requires that the existence of all burial sites be disclosed on the face of the deed conveying title to the property, on the chain of title hereafter. Letter G has to do with the Henry County Department of Transportation, and as a handout before you are some additional changes that the Henry County Department of Transportation has suggested. The first is that the first sentence is a bit redundant. It states, "The applicant or owner shall obtain a letter of approval from the Henry County Department of Transportation." That is a requirement on the plat, and under letter B, it's number 10, excuse me, number 11, and it says, "The Henry County Department of Transportation Letter of Approval of the Travel Routes." And that sentence is indeed redundant, but I'll leave it up to the wisdom of the board whether that should be removed or not. The Henry County Department of Transportation has indicated that, whereas the estimated number of loaded trucks per day coming to the site per each expected route is important, the weight, however, is not. And they recommend that the requirement that the applicant or owner provide the estimated weight be stricken. Also, the Henry County Department of Transportation has recommended different language in the last sentence before A, B, C, and D, to state, "The information provided by the applicant or owner shall include, but not be limited to, the following data to the satisfaction of the Henry County Department of Transportation in order to facilitate the required analysis." And I agree that that is better language for your review. Also, letter A, they wanted to clarify that the pavement sections of the expected routes should be required, but that it be specified as the roadway pavement sections, and also to specify that includes the base of the roadway. Yesterday, in our work session, we talked a little bit about the 100-foot setback, and that's a requirement of the state, that any landfill, inert landfill operation should be conducted more than 100 feet from any property line or enclosed structure, and that's a state requirement. We go a bit further to require a 20-foot buffer strip along the public right-of-way of any road, meeting the minimum county standards for its functional road classification. And if the Environmental Compliance and Development Plan Review Department has determined that the existing plantings are not sufficient, then they are able to require eight evergreen trees, 50 linear feet of road frontage within the 20-foot buffer. These are specific supplemental standards for inert landfills, but the location would also have to meet the general county code requirements, and as part of those code requirements are buffer requirements. So for example, the Henry County Unified Land Development Code requires a 20-foot buffer between incompatible uses, such as, for example, a C3 and an M1. That's not included in these supplemental standards, because they are required by the general code. The hours of operation shall be limited from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and any burning shall require a permit from the Henry County Fire Department, and only using an air curtain destructor. It's not stated, but it is a fact, that the Henry County Fire Department will limit any burning between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and it's not necessary to reiterate that in the supplemental standards, because it is a requirement of the Henry County Fire Department. And finally, letter J allows a monument-based ground sign not to exceed eight feet in height, with the sign face not to exceed 32 square feet. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, I know this is a public hearing, so I'd like to call for public comment. We did have someone who signed up for public comment, Mr. Lane Stokes of 3824 Ashford, Knoll. Yes, I know this, you signed up for a comment at the end of the meeting, but if we're having a public hearing on the landfill now, this would probably be the appropriate time for you to come forward and make your comments.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, staff, distinguished guests, and citizens of Henry My name is Lane Stokes, as you've stated my address. My interest in being here is by invitation from the zoning board of Henry County, because of land that my wife owns along Mount Carmel. I'm always interested to see growth in Henry County. But when it comes to inert landfills, I have a problem. I want to tell you what the problem is, and why that has been recently intensified. The problem with inert landfills is the monitor, the person who is hired to watch and to distinguish what is in a truck when it comes through to dump. And I can tell you about monitors. They're usually older men who want something to do, or younger men who would take minimum wage. They come late, they leave early, they take long lunch breaks, sometimes they don't show up at all. They get used to waving trucks through without really paying any attention to what goes on. And I can't help but always think of the movie Erin Brockovich, which is the story of a chemical company that dumped hazardous waste in the ground, it leaked into the groundwater, it got into the drinking water of the community, and it killed a lot of people by horrible forms of cancer, changing the genetic structure of their children and grandchildren for generations to come, simply because somebody wanted to make a lot of money. Now, why would I think about something as drastic as that when we're talking about Henry County and simple landfills? But I came to the zoning meeting on March 8th, and I heard the members of the board and the staff with very strange behavior. It seemed like they were very anxious, if not frantic, to pass through a certain rezoning having to do with an inert landfill, so much so that they were willing to disregard rules and regulations, perhaps even ordinances and laws that had been put in place for the protection of everybody. protection of everybody. And I just couldn't get that out of my mind, and so when I found that there was going to be a hearing today, I thought that I should come and speak to the same thing. I talked to them about this at the, at that board meeting. I warned them, how can you do this? How can you change rules and regulations for this specific thing? What is the rush? What is the big deal? It just set off warning signals, warning lights in my brain. Something is strange about this. I think perhaps, in thinking about inert landfills in general, as well as this specific one as affects our property, maybe you ought to take a little more time thinking about the monitoring system to make sure that that is in place, because it's your drinking water, and it's your reputation as a county where you want to bring in new business for growth. You do not want to do something that will cause a bad reputation that would get around. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition or in any way whatsoever regarding this ordinance amendment? Did anyone on the board have a question or comment?
I have a question. Stacy, any particular reason why we have to include the C-3, the commercial districts? Couldn't we just stay in M-1 and M-2 if this was to pass?
We certainly could. The C-3 zoning district is the most intensive commercial zoning district, and it does allow outdoor storage of materials. If you wish to include an inert landfill within any of our commercial districts, I would limit it to C-3. An inert landfill, by its definition, is supposed to be benign. It does not allow hazardous materials in any form. It does not allow materials such as garbage food-type waste which may rot. And so, an inert landfill is supposed to be filled, filled that's busted-up concrete which should be laid flat, asphalt that may be ground or placed in layers. The state requires a permit, so the state would have regulatory authority over an inert landfill as a solid waste handling facility, and the haulers have to be licensed as well through the state. So, it's not a noxious type use, and it would be appropriate in the C-3 as an intensive commercial zoning district if the board chooses to allow it in the C-3. And let me just take the opportunity to say that the staff, we take every intention of being objective when it comes to ordinance amendments and rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments, and we don't favor applicants, and we don't disfavor applicants. The rezoning and the comp plan amendments that were referred to will be coming up in a later hearing, and I'd be pleased to address those at that time.
Mr. Preston.
Could you give more examples of why we want any commercial inert landfills? I mean, just kind of walk through, and I don't mean to keep belaboring the issue, but I just want to make sure I understand why we have that on the commercial side of things.
Certainly. If you allow an inert landfill to be in the C-3 zoning district, then you allow inert landfills in more places in the county, and as a benign, not noxious land use, it would be appropriate to allow them almost as a method of construction, because the end result is to raise the level of low-lying ground, which if it's engineered correctly, may be developed upon at a future time. And this ordinance does require a geotechnical report that has been put together by a geotechnical professional if these inert landfills are to be built upon on a future date. So, it actually, if it's done according to the ordinance as it's proposed, would be a benefit to the county.
And I have, I have a question. Mr. Holder may even be able to answer this one. The Mount Zion Parkway near Garden Ridge and Coles, that area, at one time, I believe that was some low-lying area, and they brought in the dirt, the rocks, and different things, and built that up. Is that, is that in Henry County, or is that on the Clayton, is that right at the Clayton?
It's not a good line, but I can't, I don't have any knowledge of that.
Okay. Mr. Bowman.
On 138 and 42 on the corner, that, where that service station sits, years ago was a hole you could set this building in, and it was, it was put in under inert, and it came in with, they came in with asphalt, concrete, construction debris, but not trash, no stumps, no wood, and that, then they bridged it, I think, with about 15, 12 to 15-foot of dirt, and then built the service station, put the tanks underground. So, it can be done. I'm kind of, I'm like, I guess, like anybody else, that, you know, we only have a certain amount of C-3 and M-1 and M-2, and I kind of hate to give it up for much, any reason, but I did want to bring that example up because I watched it go up. I mean, I'm not sure that some of our, in my business, some of our people, we didn't take some asphalt and other things over there when they were filling that lot up, so. It can be done, and it can be monitored. I think that the issue that I'd like to know is, can, are we looking at maybe a bond by the property owner that puts a bond up to the, so that when we do, if we do get the geotech report and they have allowed some other things to go in place, that they're responsible for removing that? And I think the other thing that's important is that, am reading this right, it's, that, you know, by this unadvisory board, that the current county code does not specifically regulate inert landfills that receive materials from our site. So, really, this is more of a, a thing that we're trying to do to clean it up so that we can regulate it as opposed to that we're trying to rush to, you know, rush to judgment to throw something in. I think that's important because we could get into an issue down the road if we didn't have something to cover it with a legal issue from the standpoint that a person's property, if they wanted to do something and fill it. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's a good reason for us moving reasonably quickly on this, simply because we do not have anything to regulate it at this time, so I can understand why we were moving in that direction, but it can be done, and I've seen it done, so.
Madam Chairman, if I may. A couple of things. On the item C, paragraph C, that discusses excluded items, I would recommend that if the board approves this, that y'all approve it, excluding the language which is mistakenly placed. Items that are excluded should be removed immediately, period. I don't want to get into a situation where we're just trying to determine someone's intent, whether they mistakenly placed it there or intentionally placed it there. So, I think that language should be removed altogether. In the second sentence, after that, it says, "The excluded items and materials shall be removed from the site and shall be stored in an approved location until removal." I would recommend that we limit that sentence to, "Excluded items and hazardous materials shall be immediately removed from the site," period. If they're not to be on the site, they're not to be on the site. If someone has given license to store it on the, on the site until removal, that could be 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. So, I think the intent of this ordinance is to not allow excludable items on the site, period, and if they're found or discovered to be on the site, that they have to be removed, and we don't really want to allow anyone the opportunity to leave it on there beyond the timeframe that it should be there, which is never. Also, to Commissioner Bowman's point, I do think it's a good idea. I don't know what the monetary amount would be on such a bond, and maybe in your experience you could shed some light, but I think that if there's a violation of our ordinance, it'll be prosecuted in that manner. But those are criminal penalties for violation of our ordinance. What you're speaking to would be civil remedies that the county could avail itself in the event that someone allowed excludable items on the site. And I do think that's a good idea, and I guess that bond amount, I don't know what that's, what would be sufficient to cover that instance.
Actually, I, you know, not knowing the size of the area and what they're, what they're doing, you know, that would be between the landowner and their bonding company, and I suppose we could, could look at it also. I mean, you know, it depends on how, the depth of the property and what we're trying to fill, you know, it, it, there's obviously a lot of issues, but I mean, you know, just a monetary bond as opposed to trying to do quantities that would be put in place, you know, and then have the geotech report, and you could release the bond after the, after they did their geo, you know, after done their report and done their boards and said, okay, this is what we got, and you're good to go, and then you could release it.
If it is the wishes of the board, I'd like to make a suggestion on this particular item, because a number of language amendments have been brought forth to the board to what was in our exhibit book for consideration. The county attorney has also requested some changes to some language in what we originally received, and then we have the bond issue. We can delay a decision on this, if it pleases the board, until the April 16th meeting at 9:00 a.m., so all of the changes that were referenced this morning can be in a document, so we're sure nothing has been left out, and then the issue related to the bond can be answered at that point and added. And this does count as a public hearing, it's just that we would delay the decision until that April 16th meeting. Mr. Holder.
By definition, an inert landfill is benign. There's no question. Do we need inert landfills? We do. Mr. Stokes was his own point as he could be in saying monitoring is the key. You can do all of the geotech reports you want to after the fact, but you have the potential of the soil being poisoned or for whatever reason, some hazardous waste being put in. Monitoring is key, so when we go back and we're trying to update and upgrade the requirements, I think monitoring needs to be looked at very closely, because it may be 20 years down the road, if somebody wanted to develop the property, you did the geotech boring, and oh, we've got some hazardous waste in there, we've got to remove it. Well, what's happened within the 20-year period as far as those hazardous materials being in place? Not to say that it is going to happen, but there's always that chance that it can. So, I think, I think monitoring needs to be looked at too, is to how we can be as safe as we can with this, because, and he was definitely on point by saying, you know, it depends on the guy that's seeing the truck come in, and if I can get by with dumping it and not get caught, it may be 25 years down the road before somebody catches me, and I'll take the chance. Well, it's the chance that someone else is risked, so I think monitoring is important, very important.
Can you quote that as well to account? Well, if there's no further discussion on this, I will look to the board for a motion. All right. Do you want to do the date specific, April 16? Okay. We have a motion on the floor to delay this decision on this and table till Monday, April the 16th, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is a public hearing. Square One Properties LLC of McDonough requests an amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located south of Mount Carmel Road, north and south of Bridges Road, in landlots 113 and 144 of the sixth district, and landlots 128 and 129 of the seventh district. The request is to change the future land use map designation from commercial to industrial. Our presenter, again, is Stacy Jordan, planning and zoning, exhibit number seven.
Good morning again, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Displayed on the overhead is a copy of the future land use map, and the subject property is outlined in yellow here. This orange line is Mount Carmel Road, and this green line is the dirt portion of Bridges Road. This is Birch Creek, and the subject property has frontage on Mount Carmel. The dirt portion of Bridges Road cuts through the middle, and it actually touches Birch Creek at the south. The red area indicates a commercial land use designation. The applicant has requested an M-1 zoning that we'll hear in an associated hearing to allow an inert landfill to be developed as a construction-related business in the M-1 zoning district, and the county requires that zonings be consistent with the county's plan. Therefore, the applicant is requesting that for the area within the yellow outline, that it be changed from a commercial land use designation to an industrial land use designation. The county staff has noted that the area, particularly along Mount Carmel Road, has greater visibility than the area to the south of the subject property, south of the dirt portion of Bridges Road, which is currently closed. The zoning advisory board, at their meeting on March the 8th, they considered the county's recommendation for denial of the applicant's request for the north portion that has frontage on Mount Carmel, but approval for the south portion, and at their public hearing, they voted to recommend denial of the applicant's request for the entire property, and I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Does any board member have a question for Stacy? Mr. Holder.
Mr. Jordan, as far as Birch Creek, does it lie with any watershed protection, in the watershed protection district?
Yes. Birch Creek flows into the city of McDonough Drinking Water Reservoir.
Okay. As far as restrictions for commercial use or industrial use within, is this considered a watershed critical area or watershed?
No, it's not a critical area, but it is a limited development area.
Limited development, okay. What does, what does it say, what does the ordinance say about landfills or anything as far as commercial or industrial uses within the watershed protection district?
The impervious surface area of the site would be limited to 25%, and the development area would have to be at least 150 feet from the edge of Birch Creek.
I'm sorry, I missed, I couldn't hear you.
The area to be developed would have a 150-foot setback from Birch Creek.
From Birch Creek. Okay.
Mr. Preston? No, you look like you had a question. Anyone else with a question for Stacy? Okay. If not, this is a public hearing, and at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the amendment to the comprehensive plan on this particular piece of property. At this time, Square One Properties LLC has made the request. Is there someone here who wishes to speak on behalf of Square One?
I'm John McGarvey, and I represent Square One. Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm just basically here to answer any questions. We, we started this process over three years ago in talking with a number of the Commissioners, some of the Commissioners who are not here anymore, and there's, there's no rush to judgment from our standpoint. We just want to make sure that it's done properly, we want to make sure that it's addressed, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone have a question? Okay. All right, if there are no questions from the board, you have before you a resolution as it relates to the comprehensive plan amendment, and I'll look for someone to make a motion.
Madam Chair, have we called for a public hearing?
Yes, I did. On this one? Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I did.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a request. We table this one to, that Monday, the 16th.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Stamy to table this item until Monday, the 16th, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a public hearing. Square One Properties LLC of McDonough requests- hearing. Square One Properties LLC of McDonough requests a rezoning from C2 to M1 for property located south of Mount Carmel Road, north and south of Bridges Road, in landlots 113 and 144 of the 6th District, and landlots 128 and 129 of the 7th District. The property consists of 27.154 plus or minus acres, and the request is for an inert landfill. Our presenter is Stacy Jordan, planning and zoning, and that's exhibit number six. I'm sorry, exhibit number eight.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, the display before you indicates the subject property here with the hatch marks over the red. This red indicates a C2 zoning district, which stands for general commercial, and you can see that this subject property, except for the south, is surrounded to the east, to the northeast and to the southwest by property indicated by the gray color, which stands for M1, which is light manufacturing. The applicant's request is for M1, to allow the development of an inert landfill as a construction-related business. The staff, in its research, has noted that the property is vacant, and that it abuts largely vacant property to the east. It also abuts the, a landscaping operation, which could be allowed as a commercial operation in a commercial zoning district, even though that neighboring property is zoned M1. And also in the vicinity at I-75 is a, a trucking, an establishment that sells large trucks and other vehicles, which also could be allowed in a C3 commercial zoning district, even though this, the zoning district for the neighboring property is zoned M1. So whereas, it may seem apparent that the subject property should be rezoned to M1 to comply with the character of the area, in fact, the development of the area is largely commercial. The staff has also noted that the frontage of the property on Mount Carmel Road, it, it actually has a, a greater visibility than the property to the south, south of Bridges Road, where the actual inert landfill is proposed. So therefore, upon much discussion, the staff recommended that the request for M1 be denied for the northern portion of the subject property, where it abuts Mount Carmel Road and north of Bridges Road, but that the applicant's request be approved to allow the development of the inert landfill in an M1 zoning district as a construction-related business south of Bridges Road. The zoning advisory board held a public hearing and recommended, recommended denial of the applicant's request for the entire subject property, and I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Does any board member have a question for Stacy on this? Did the applicant wish to add anything? We've had a pretty thorough discussion of this parcel, I think, to this point. We had a discussion on this yesterday as well. I know we need to go ahead and have a public hearing on this, and then if it is the wishes of the board to table this item to, I think Mr. Stamey had requested it be tabled to a night meeting. So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in reference to this rezoning request? Okay. If not, Mr. Stamey?
I have a question for Stacy. Stacy, the piece of property, you're talking about a split zoning, correct? That's the staff recommending?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And that's unusual for the staff to actually recommend a split zoning. However, in this case, the right-of-way for Bridges Road bisects the property, and so it's an easy split, if you will, to designate the portion north of Bridges Road and south of Mount Carmel as C2, but to rezone the, the portion south of Bridges Road as M1.
The entire property consists of 27-plus acres. Do we know how much the M1 would, if the, the M1 request would be if we stay consistent with staff's request?
No, sir, I don't have that at this time.
Okay. If we could, maybe we could have that. Mr. McGarrett could help us get that between now and the next hearing?
Yes, sir.
Uh, which will be, I'd like, you may go ahead and make a motion.
Uh, yes, you can go ahead and make a motion.
Um, I'd like to make a motion. We table this request to the night meeting being, excuse me here, I think it's April 17th, and at that time, I'd like to know the actual acreage between the splits, between the, the request from the C2 opposed to the M1.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. McGarrett?
And additionally, I'd like to have the minutes from that meeting, so we can see the discussion that went on with the zoning advisory board.
Yes, ma'am.
The site area is 41 acres. Is the total site area, or are you talking about just the one that we're?
Making the request for the change.
So that's the 26 acres?
Is it? I don't know. I, I don't know if it's being split half of that, or what, I'm not sure.
Commissioner, the, the site now-
Proposed field area is six acres. So I don't know whether, never mind, we, we talked about that.
So we have the motion on the floor to table this item for a decision till Tuesday, April the 17th, by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a public hearing, a request to amend Chapter 3-15, amusements for the purpose of providing supplemental standards as it pertains to the use of non-residential property for teen clubs, teen dance halls, and/or youth activity centers. Our presenter is Sherri Hopson Matthews, Director of Planning and Zoning, and that's exhibit number nine.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. If you all will recall, in February of this year, a moratorium was enacted for the purpose of revisiting our current business license regulations and zoning regulations as it pertains to those properties that are zoned commercial, office institutional, and industrial, for the purpose of dance halls, dance clubs, party centers, and party halls for teenage gatherings. I will tell you, over the last month and a half, staff has worked diligently with our Police Department Chief Nichols, our Fire Department Chief Kelly, and with our Business License Office, Dottie Green, to try to come back with what we feel is a set of regulations that, one, we feel comfortable with, but two, has enough information in it so that we are able to regulate the rowing number of requests that we've received for such businesses. I certainly won't go through all 18 pages with you, but I will try to hit some high points that I feel are pretty important as it pertains to the regulation of teen clubs, teen dance halls, youth activity centers. I will tell you that we did check with various jurisdictions, and it was quite interesting to see that a number of jurisdictions don't have provisions, and when we called to verify, they told us that we just don't allow them. So we certainly had to go outside of our metro area and look at other jurisdictions. I will tell you that Clayton County did have some stipulations in place, and the city of Stockbridge also has an ordinance which they define as a youth activity center. But we also looked at the city of Atlanta and Baton Rouge, Louisiana. If you will bear with me, I'll try to hit on some of the high points. Again, this is an ordinance that will be included in Chapter 3-15. It's currently entitled amusements. This section will be regulated by our Business License Office, and we have done some creative thinking in determining how we will regulate them. I will tell you that staff is recommending that we allow teen clubs, teen dance halls, youth activity centers to be permissible in our C2 zoning district as an event facility for teen clubs, teen dances, and teen activity centers. We are also going to regulate, or we are wishing to regulate, specific items such as chaperones. We have included in the ordinance that at least two adults shall be required for the first 50 people that's participating in the events, and then over 50, there should be an additional one chaperone. What I will tell you is that this ordinance only regulates those event facilities where profit is being gained. So if you're having a sweet 16 or a birthday party for your two or three-year-old, this is certainly not an ordinance that you will be bound by. Only those individuals that are for profit. School board functions, county functions, they are all excluded from this ordinance, so they will not be regulated by it. What we have imposed is that we certainly get our fire department and our police department involved in this, and we are requiring that we do have security personnel, and that an adequate number of security personnel be determined by our occupancy load, which is set by our fire chief in conjunction with our police department. We have also included specific requirements, is the enclosed areas shall be prohibited. We found that a lot of times, a lot of these parties are taking place in warehouses and in buildings where there's so many offices and rooms that we can't easily access. So that is something that we are regulating, that the assembly area must be one open room to ensure that all patrons are visible to the security personnel at all times. We are also incorporating or establishing a review committee, and we are calling it a license review board. So anyone who is applying for a new application, or to renew an existing application, they will have to go before our license review board. That enables us, one, to make sure that if there's been any standing issues, that we're able to address them. Our license review board will be handled by our Business License Office, and then they will select individuals to serve on that board. We are recommending that the police department and fire department be included as part of that review committee. Some of the highlights of the ordinance is a very thorough list of requirements that you will now be required to submit as part of obtaining a license. One thing that we are requiring is that anyone who is participating in the event, be it the owner, be it the caterers, be it security personnel, you have to have a criminal background check, because we want to make sure that we have individuals in there that are, that don't have a past history and are intertwining with our youth. We have defined our youth as those individuals that are between the ages of 14 and 18 years of age, and before you can enter the premises, you have to provide some form of identification. And we know a lot of them don't have a driver's license, so a school identification will be appropriate, but that will be required as well. We are also requiring that if you want to operate a teen event facility, we are recommending that there be a $500 license fee that has to be renewed every year, and that is payable to our Business License Office. I did quickly mention that we are requiring it within our CT zoning district, but I will ask you to reference that there are specific requirements on where they can be located. For example, you cannot have one that's 500 feet of any zoning district that is zoned for single or multiple, multiple-family residential. You have to be 500 feet of any pre-existing establishment holding an alcohol liquor license. You cannot be 500 feet of any pre-existing place of worship. You cannot be 500 feet of another teen event or facility, and you cannot be within 500 feet of any accredited public or private school. We even go into regulating the hours of operation. So we've tried to include any and everything that we can think of, that we've witnessed, or that we've seen, or that we've heard from concerned citizens, and tried to incorporate it in the ordinance. I know I've gone through it pretty fast, but if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
We have a number of pastors here with us today. This does not apply to churches either.
That is correct.
So I wanted to make sure we were clear on that. And also, we had this discussion several weeks ago, and for citizens who may not have been here when that discussion took place, I'd like to ask Chief Nichols if he could come forward and kind of reiterate again some of the issues that we faced as a county that brought this to light, and, and certainly exposed a need for this type of ordinance.
Excuse me. We had two incidents within the last six, seven months where we had a warehouse, it actually started out as a, I think a bounce-and-play-type warehouse that was doubling on the weekends for, for having parties. The first time I became aware of it was, I believe it was back in October of 2011, and my morning watch unit got dispatched to this party that had been basically out of control. There was use of drugs, use of alcohol. The coordinator of the party actually had security out there, and we determined through the arrival of my officers that security was in the back of the building when all the other illegal activity was occurring in the front of the building. So obviously, at that time, that security, individuals who were working security weren't doing what they were designed to do. Then, working with Lieutenant Gray and the SWAT team, we, we had determined that they were going to have another event at this same location, and we got with code enforcement, the fire department, and actually shut it down before it was to happen. But unfortunately, what occurred is kids, through social media and everything, that knew about this party, they started showing up. Security personnel was actually pointing to a location over here in McDonough, which I think was a establishment that was used for cheerleading, and again, it was one of the box-style warehouses that we have in the county. And what happened was, this event swelled to about 250, 300 kids, and we also learned that the event promoter, even though the facility was full to capacity, was very dangerous in terms of fire exits. Fire exits were locked and blocked, excuse me. But we determined that the promoter of this event had actually encouraged taking the additional fee, a higher fee than what they were charging, to get in this event, even though it was filled to capacity. I got in touch with Lieutenant Gray, we got our SWAT team assembled, we wanted to go in, we wanted to break this party up, but we knew that there were potential ramifications for violence and, and the likes. And a lot of these kids that ended up at this party through our visual inspection of a lot of tags, they were from Clayton County, I think some were from counties all the way down in South Georgia. But luckily, we were able to send our SWAT team in. It wasn't a show of force, more than a manpower issue. I didn't want to disturb what we had going on, because it was a Saturday night. We were able to go in and, and end up shutting this party down in conjunction with our code enforcement and also our fire department. So we have, and that's kind of what precipitated all this, is the potential danger, and I also know, Mr. Bowman, up in your district, there's a, there's a facility up there that's been having similar-type parties. So we saw an, an urgent need, also reflecting back several years ago, when we had a very unfortunate incident at St. Ives Crossing, which was a, a graduation party, which two girls were shot and killed. So obviously, we're here to keep the peace. We also want to work in conjunction with our code enforcement, our planning and zoning, and hopefully, we can get ahead of this game. We also understand that, you know, kids need a place to go, that there are a lot of kids out there that are good kids, and we want to help facilitate keeping these environments safe for them, and that's why we've came up with some of these recommendations in, in this ordinance.
Does any board member have a question or comment for the chief? Mr. Preston?
The question I have is, you've, you've mentioned the trouble with the private security that they, that they've acquired. Is there any, what's required to be considered security? Just, you have to be over 21, or is there any, do they have any skill set that allows them to be considered security?
Well, prior to us reviewing this ordinance, there wasn't any. And that's what they were doing basically. They were giving them a T-shirt that maybe had the lettering security on there, but there was no vetting process in place. And that's why I made the illustration, which was you had the individuals that were, were seen wearing T-shirts with security in the back of the building, and all the illegal activity, or the majority of the illegal activity was at the front of the building, and one of your first prerequisites is you have to be right there in, in the crowd where everybody's at and mingling. And I think they even told us, if I'm not mistaken, that, well, that, that wasn't their concern. What was happening out in the parking lot was not their concern, and I beg to differ with that. Anything that's happening within the purview of the officers that are out there, I think that's also why we've identified that we want to vet any security personnel. Primarily, what we would do also is encourage them to use law enforcement here in the county, whether it be the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department. Number one, because we have arrest powers, should we observe a violation of the law that happens in our presence as opposed to security personnel, if they don't have law enforcement powers, they would have to do like any other citizen, call 911, and then we would have to use them as a witness.
That leads exactly into kind of my question. I notice when I go to the movie theaters and other things, you see off-duty police officers who are doing security services. Do, is that something they just, the, the private owners are doing upon themselves, or is that something we've required, and they're just meeting their, their obligation?
In that particular instance, it's the movie theaters that are hiring their own security and paying out of their own, their own pockets for that added measure. But using- But usually, if you see either a Henry County police officer or a sheriff's deputy, usually, they're being paid by that particular vendor or venue for that added protection.
As a father of two daughters and other things, is there anything, or is it overstepping to consider requiring that we have law, you know, off-duty officials involved? Because that's the only thing, the deterrent factor appeals to me, because we're young people. Safety is obviously very, very important, and I just wanted to, I didn't know if that might be an overstep, since we have limited resources, but it probably could be beneficial to also our law enforcement officials, too.
Well, and again, one of the things that we put in there is that we encourage that, and I didn't want to, you know, box people in saying, "You've got to use us." But at least what we're doing here is, we're vetting a lot of other, like the AMS with people serving alcohol in different locations. We run a criminal history, and what they would have to do is, they would have to provide a list to us of who's going to work that particular event, and then they would have to come forward and sign a waiver saying it would be okay for us to run the criminal history, because by law, we just can't run it without any kind of probable cause. So they would have to do it on a voluntary basis. So also, the thought process here is, if somebody knows that they have egregious or prior offense, it wouldn't be very wise for them to come up and have us run that. But also, in the same process, if we did run it, we could also vet them, as opposed to them being any kind of, especially a child offense or something like that, and then putting them in that environment.
And Commissioner Preston, just to piggyback on that, the ordinance as presented does include a section under our security personnel where it states, "Adquate number of security personnel shall include persons trained as law enforcement personnel." Then we go on to state that at no time shall fewer than 25% of the security personnel in attendance at a teen event have training as a law enforcement personnel. So that may take care of your...
That definitely, so.
What we could do is, and sometimes, especially with Atlanta Motor Speedway, sometimes, because we don't have enough, they can bring them from another county. And of course, a deputy has jurisdiction throughout the entire state. An officer has jurisdiction in that particular area that they're certified in. So we could, they could actually work it. I mean, I don't know what the probability of that is. I think realistically, they would stay within this area to get those security officers.
You know, I don't think anybody on this board wants more regulation. I think we work hard to try to have less, but in cases like this, with, when it comes to protecting our kids, and making sure that they can go out and have a good time on the weekend and hang out with their friends, it's a shame we have to put things like this in place, and that, you know, adults are not more responsible by opening these places up to these kids. But we're charged with protecting the public safety, and certainly, when it comes to youth, we definitely have to be diligent in that respect. Does any board member have a question, comment, or anything else pertaining to this item before I call for public comment?
Chairman Mathis, I did, I failed to include one section that is certainly important, an appeal section. So that will be added to this ordinance, and we'll just add a statement that any denials, revocations, or suspensions shall be subject to the right of appeals as per outlined in Section 3-3-32 letter D in our Henry County Code of Ordinances. So in the event that a license is denied, we certainly want to afford individuals the opportunity to file an appeal. One other thing that I wanted to modify, or at least get some guidance from the board on, in speaking with the county attorney, and I think it certainly is maybe a bit high, under Section 3-15-20 insurance requirements, right now, we have proposed that individuals who want to operate and have teen events, that they should have at least $1 million of public liability insurance. I know in our current Code of Ordinances, it is $1 million, but it's per 10,000 persons. I certainly don't think we'll have teen parties with 10,000 teenagers. So in speaking with our county attorney, we're recommending that maybe $250,000 per 50 individuals be the limit, or be the minimum number. So I certainly will look for some direction from you all on that.
If, I guess the county attorney may get answer to this. If there's one liability claim for wrongful death or injury, $250,000 is certainly not going to cover a claim.
No, it really is a private matter if someone wants to file suit for an injury. We just felt that in looking at the other portions of the ordinance, that a party with 50 teenagers and requiring a $1 million worth of coverage seemed to be disproportionate to the probable liability that would occur, especially with all the other safeguards that this ordinance provides by way of security personnel, background checks, law enforcement presence. It seemed to be a bit prohibitive, in my estimation, but if the board wants to, it was just, I asked Ms. Mathews to bring that up as a point of discussion for y'all's consideration. The 10,000, $1 million limit that currently exists, I think, will probably only apply to maybe events at the Speedway, I believe. I don't think there probably have been venues where we have 10,000 people in attendance. So it certainly will be sealing this particular event out and setting it aside in a class unto itself. Those were my thoughts, Madam Chair.
Any board member have a question or comment on that before?
Before, one member. It's amazing that from an inert landfill that we talked about earlier, to a teen club that we're talking about now, what is the key word? Monitoring. It is to keep the inert landfill clean, and it also falls within the hands of that chaperone or the person who is in charge of that facility for allowing what goes on within that facility or at that venue. So monitoring, again, we're right back to that same word, and I just couldn't help but think about that.
All right, if there's no other questions from the board at this time, I'd like to call for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in regards to the amendment of the, or the adding of the supplemental standards as it applies to teen clubs. Let the record reflect that we had no one to speak. Mr. County Manager, you had a comment?
Yeah, a question. It was mentioned, I think, from Chief Nichols, that there was going to be a review board for each of these applications. I think, back to the point of regulations, we don't like to do it, have to do it. At the same time, creating another layer of approval through a board, how is this board going to operate so that the person gets the type of review? Is it going to be once a month, once a quarter, or just every time somebody applies, so that the public understands how quick an application will be looked at, or how much earlier than the event they need to submit their application to ensure that they have time enough to get it approved or disapproved?
And I can certainly follow up on that for you. We have established a license review board, and once an application is submitted, we have 30 days to make a decision on whether it's approved or denied. We certainly can, and I understand, you know, if people have events, that they don't want to wait and wait and wait. So 30 days is just what staff has recommended. We certainly can change that if the board sees fit.
I just wanted the public to understand that their board's not going to sit there and sit on it. There is a timeframe within the ordinance that says it will be taken care of, or a decision made, rather, one way or the other, given that opportunity.
All right, are there any other additional comments?
One time question, and I refer to the county attorney. You feel that this one is, this ordinance is legally defensible, is that correct?
I do. I think it's a really good ordinance, especially limited to the scope of addressing the problem that's been identified.
And as I asked for someone to make a motion in regards to this, keep in mind, too, the recommendation that the county attorney had, as it applies to the insurance requirements in Section 3-15-20. And you may wish to make that as part of your motion on the ordinance to amend our chapter on amusements of the Henry County Code of Ordinances. And with that being said, I'll look to someone to make a motion.
I move to approve with the recommendation of the county attorney on the $250,000 per 50.
Madam Chair, if I might, just a little clarification. I just noticed something on Section 3-15-17, Dancing for Hire. Just clarification here. It says that, "No person conducting, maintaining, or carrying on a teen event or youth activity center operation shall permit any instructor who is under 21 years of age to give instructions to dancing person in a private room." It makes it sound like if somebody's over 21, they can go ahead and have dancing in a private room? Is that the way I read that?
And when we reviewed it internally, that certainly did come up. So we probably need to reword it to make it read better, because when we did our staff review, one or two of us thought, "Oh, that means you can go in a private room," and one or two of us thought, "No, that's not what it means." But yes, sir, we can certainly clarify that.
The way it's written right now, that's my interpretation, maybe not yours, but it sounds like, again, it allows private rooms, but the person is to be over 21 years of age. And if that's the case, is that the intent?
No, sir, that is not the intent. And it probably should just be, "No dancing for hire shall be permissible within the event facility."
That's what I would think.
Would you like to amend your motion and include that?
Sorry, I didn't see that, but, no, I think, I think you've got it covered. "No person conducting, maintaining, carrying on..." I'm not going to read the whole paragraph, but, no, yeah, I do want to amend it, and absolutely not. I mean, a booth, an alco, an enclosure? No, uh-uh. Thanks for bringing that up, because I'd read it, but I mean, we've got about 15 pages on that, and I didn't pick up on that. But yes, ma'am, I will.
Okay, we have an amended motion. Do you amend your second, Mr. Holder? All right, any further discussion on this item? If not, all in favor? All right, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to purchasing and procurement. We have a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase Ready Mix Portland Cement Concrete. Our presenter is Rod Gray, purchasing director, exhibit number 10.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. First item I have is a request to award an annual contract for Ready Mix Portland Cement. Terms of the contract are two years, with a mutually agreed-upon one-year renewal to Gray Ready Mix USA LLC. As the overall low bidder, the cost will be allocated to the department that utilizes the contract.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Oh, one.
Mr. Holder?
Rod, you're not related to Gray Concrete.
No, sir.
Okay, just want the record to...
No, sir.
That's a good question to ask. I could see that now on the block.
I can see it.
All right, if there's no further questions on this item, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. One request I have, too, because as I was looking through this resolutions, I know different people probably draft the different resolutions.
Yes, ma'am.
I would ask that in the future, when the resolutions come, under the "now, therefore", be it resolved, that whoever the contract is awarded to and the price also be included in that final paragraph of the resolution. I noticed it was a mix throughout with the different ones, but for consistency, I'd like to see all of that contained in the "now, therefore," if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval to purchase networking equipment needed to equip the new emergency communications building, and that's exhibit number 11.
Yes, ma'am. This request comes from the Department of Emergency Communications. They are requesting switch and access points to implement technology for the new emergency communications building. The recommendation is to purchase this equipment from AdCap Network Systems, utilizing the state of Georgia contract, at a cost of $28,000. $28.30 funds are available in the Emergency Communication Capital Fund to complete this purchase.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the purchase of the switches and access points to implement voice and data technology for the new emergency communications building, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval to purchase a Mako breathing air system, and that's exhibit number 12.
Yes, ma'am. This request comes from the Henry County Fire Department to purchase the Mako breathing air system for the new fire station, number nine, at a cost of $36,929, utilizing a sole source agreement with BNT Enterprises LLC in Sharpsburg, Georgia. Funding for this purchase is available in the SPOSS Building Capital Project Fund.
Do you have a question or comment, Mr. Bowman?
Can we buy the equipment through SPOSS for that?
Is the new piece of the... Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, you have before you a resolution approving the purchase for the Mako breathing air system, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a purchasing requisition for software maintenance, and that's exhibit number 13.
Yes, ma'am. This request comes from both GIS and Stormwater to renew the software maintenance on the county's ARC info, ARC editor, and ARC view systems, as purchased from Environmental Systems Research Institute. This is a proprietary purchase for ongoing services at a cost of $15,100. The cost will be shared proportionately by the two departments.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution granting approval, and I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Holmes, and a second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a proposal for occupational medical services, and that's exhibit number 14.
Thank you. Yes, this project was evaluated through the RFP process. The process rendered an award to Henry Occupational Medical, Henry Occupational Medical, a division of Piedmont Henry Hospital, with an aggregate score of 450 out of possible 500 points. The evaluation committee consisted of employees from Human Resources, DOT, Fire and Emergency Services, and the police department. And the recommendation is to award this project to Henry Occupational Med with the, they were the only submittal, I do want to state that for the record, but with a score of 450 out of 500 possible points.
Mr. Bowman?
Probably the only one that could provide all of the services that are in these 10 pages of services, wouldn't they? I mean, really, locally, that are closed.
Yes, sir, and there were some other issues that, from the previous RFP to now, that we wanted to strengthen ourselves a little bit, as far as their history of their litigation, their financial capabilities, things of that nature. And so, it was a little stronger product than the previous offering, and maybe that had something to do with it also.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to occupational medical services, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval to purchase food products for the senior center cafeterias and home delivery meals, exhibit number 15.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is a request from Senior Services for a $50,000 blanket purchase order to purchase the necessary food and supplies off an existing contract with Sutherland Food Service. Funds are available in the Senior Services budget.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
This is an ongoing contract, correct? I mean, this is, this is not a new contract, this is ongoing.
Yes, sir. The code states that a $10,000 purchase limit for board approval, to succeed the limit is strictly a technicality. An approved contract, the budget is available, and it just requires board approval, because it's over $10,000. Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
I just want to piggyback on some of the notes I saw from the different departments on, are we doing checking from time to time, just to make sure they're competitive as to what other counties are doing, just to keep everybody and make sure we're getting the best bang for the buck for our citizens?
We typically do checking, but this contract is a little unique, because most other counties actually do contracts for food services. We have a vendor come in and do everything. Our county is unique in that we just purchase the food, and we hire staff for the preparation and the operations. So on a comparison basis to other municipalities, it's a little difficult. It's not quite apple to apple. But I have spoken with Senior Services. We have very competitive pricing, some of which is even lower than wholesale pricing. So at this point, we do feel confident that we have an overall competitive contract for these food services.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to approve the purchase requisition for the purchase of food and grocery items for the senior centers use, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval to expend funds to relocate field lighting poles and add one new pole at the Red Hawk Field, and that's exhibit number 16.
Yes, thank you. This... Yes, thank you, this is a sole source purchase to accomplish the necessary moves the chairman stated through Musco Lighting, this is a sole source, because they will not, they will not value our warranty if we go outside of the, outside of utilizing Musco. The cost is sixty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, funding is available in the Splas Two Park Capital Project.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, Mr. Holder, I believe this lies in your district, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. You can tell we're getting closer to lunch, it's speeding up a little bit, so.
I'm talking very fast, I'm a big guy.
The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a purchase requisition for renewal of software support services, exhibit number seventeen.
Yes, this is another item, the ten thousand dollar board approval limit kicked in, it's a continuation of our agreement with Interdev LLC in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the purpose of web filter updates, web filter replacements, web software support for the Barracuda coverage period of April fourteenth, twenty-twelve through April thirteenth, twenty-thirteen. Funds are available in Technology Services Repairs and Maintenance Account at a cost of ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Preston?
The only thing I noticed was, when I did a quick web search, if you do three years, because it brings the, the cost of sixteen thousand dollars for three years, five years is right under twenty thousand dollars, so they obviously give you tremendous discounts if you're willing to line up with them, is that, are we, it seems like we're paying a premium, I know as a government entity, they can't bind us for more than a year, but are we doing everything we can to make sure we're getting the bang for the buck, as I always say?
I would feel much more comfortable deferring that question to IT.
Right.
This is simply a matter that I processed as requested, and I do not have that answer, so, and I wouldn't feel comfortable making-
But you can see, if we can do five years for twenty thousand, divide that-
Mathematically, it makes sense.
Four thousand dollars versus eleven is a big difference.
There may be a mitigating reason why they don't want to extend it like that, but I do not know whether there is or not.
Okay.
I guess on that, I'll have a question for the county attorney, if we voted to approve this for one year, could they check on that, and then, and then we could come back at the next meeting on the sixteenth and amend that contract if it seemed like it would save us money awarding it for a longer period of time?
Well, I do know that once it's approved, it becomes binding by this board, and I don't know what the terms of the RFP provide that will allow you to amend it after the fact. I'm not sure if we have to go back and get the negotiated agreement with the vendor. So I will be, I wouldn't be comfortable with you all approving under those standards, under those circumstances.
Well, I know we've got to have the filter, because the coverage period is April the fourteenth of this year till April thirteenth of next year, and our next meeting is not the sixteenth, I shudder to think what we would receive through our emails without a filter for that two-day period, so, that's why I was trying to see if there was some way that between now and the official date, if there could-
And please understand, this is just through a simple web search that I did this, so I mean, I just need somebody to tell us if it's an apples to apples type, you know, pricing structure.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I do not know the answer to that question.
All right, that's something we can probably look at for next year, then, since we're on a time schedule here. You have before you a resolution approving the purchase, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? We have a motion-
Second.
All right, we have a second by Mr. Holmes, any, all in favor? And all opposed? All right, motion carries, no surprise there, motion carries four one, with Bowman, Holder, Stamey, and Holmes in favor, and Preston in opposition. Okay? And I think that's it, are we-
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Is that it? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the District Five Appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. I believe that we had a resignation of Cicely Bland, and Mr. Holmes has a replacement for Cicely.
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Cicely for her service, she took a position in the northeastern part of the country, so I want to thank her for her service and all that she did for the library board, but I think the replacement, Dr. Rita Bailey will be a great replacement, and she will add value to the library board, so I move to approve her as the appointment for the library.
We have a motion to approve Dr. Rita Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, we have a number of minutes to approve, and so we're going to have to take some of these separately, of course, Mr. Preston, you were not here for any of those, and then we had some folks who were absent. So the first one we want to look at will be February the sixth, two thousand and twelve, and Mr. Stamey, you were not present for this one, are there any additions to be made to the minutes? If not, I need a motion to approve those. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? And motion carries four zero with Mr. Stamey abstaining and Mr. Preston abstaining. All right, the next minutes are going to be from February the seventh, February fifteenth, February thirteenth, February seventeenth, February twenty-first, another one on February the twenty-first, and then on March the fifth. Are there any corrections to be made to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. At this time, we are moving on to public comment, where citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting, and we have several who have signed up, and of course, public comment is limited to five minutes per person, and the first one that we have signed up today is Ralph Easterwood of ten twenty-seven Brush Arbor Court of McDonough, and he is here to speak on public safety. So Pastor Ralph, if you would, good morning.
Good morning, ma'am, Madam Chairman and all the Commissioners, I'm here to speak up for our public servants, and I don't know about this five minutes, I'll try to get through, we've been here two hours, and I'm about ready to take up an offering for dinner, okay, so, but I've been a pastor, and I'm a pastor Emeritus of the Glen Haven Baptist Church, been on staff forty-three years, I've been a resident of Henry County since the fifties, and we own about a hundred and forty acres of property down here, and we've been down here on a regular basis since eighty-nine. Our church come down here in two thousand and two, and we're very public service servant conscious, we've raised over a hundred thousand dollars since we've been here in two thousand and two for police and firemen and special events, and also we have special days, we have breakfasts, and Pastor Stan and I, he's a senior pastor and I are both chaplains, I have had over two hundred and seven rides with over a hundred and eighty different officers, and I've spent with police officers over nine hundred hours in police cars, but I'm just as concerned about our firemen, about our, all of, all the public servants as I am our police. Our church has experienced tremendous growth in the ten years we've been here, we've had over seventeen hundred people to join, and most of these people live in Henry County. We realize the economy is down, we realize the home values are less, we realize there's less tax revenue coming in, but why am I here? I'm here because of the concern for the welfare of all of our public servants. I know a little bit more about the police officers, I know that we have about a hundred thousand dollars invested in a police officer, out to the academy and the FTO and the probation time, and we have a lot of those officers are leaving us now. We know the salary structure is low, and we know we have furlough days, and I think we have a tremendous problem in the morale of our police officers, and I'm sure a lot of our other public servants. They're leaving for better paying jobs, and this is happening in all the precincts. Well, crime is up in Henry County. I lived in the Stockbridge, Ellwood area for a while, and now we live in the McDonough area, and the crime is really up in the, in the Stockbridge and Ellwood area, and it's all also creeping up and getting more so in our area. I live in Brush Arbor, and within thirty feet of my bedroom the other night, they cut the catalytic converters out from under a truck parked right in front of my house, and so we know that crime is up, we know there's a tremendous need for the police officers to be here. The fire stations, the paramedics, the fire people are very important to us. I'm seventy-seven years old, and strokes and heart attacks are very prevalent in people my age, and so we certainly want the efficiency of our firemen and our paramedics and all that to be with us. The integrity and the efficiency of our public servants is tremendous, I know that, I've spent many hours with them, and I hope that I realize, and my sympathy goes out to you all because of the budgets and the cuts you're having to make, but to keep Henry County a safe place to live in, not only with our property and with our person and with all of our public servants, I feel like that we've got to really take them into consideration on their salary structures, on their retirement, and on what they're going to stay here for. And I want to stay in Henry County the rest of my life, it's a tremendous place to live, and I'm on a limited income, I'm retired now, I don't like the word of being retired, really, and I'm involved with my chaplaincy ministry, and Pastor Stan has allowed me to stay at Glen Haven with my Bible class, but I'm willing to sacrifice more, whatever it takes to cause our public servants to feel appreciated and to stay on their jobs and to have them as qualified people that can do their jobs, week in and week out, is very important to us. Henry County is a great place to live. Henry County is also a safe place to live, and I pray that you'll be able to find the resources to cause it to continue to be so. Thank you so much for your time today, I appreciate being able to come.
Thank you. The next person that has signed up is M.C. Buddy Lyon of one ninety-nine Crown Forest Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. It's hard, it's hard to follow Brother Ralph, he's a good speaker. I've lived in the county about eighteen years. During that time, I've retired, I've gone to the citizens' police class, the fire department, search, and emergency weather. I've gotten to know a number of these individuals in the fire department, the police department, I've ridden with them, and what I've come to learn, I've always had a respect for them, but what I've come to learn is, it's not about money, these people, it's a calling, it's certainly not about the money, and so it concerns me with the erosion of services that I've seen, and some of it, we don't have control of, we all know what the economy These people need to be protected, we need to see that they can stay on the job, not go somewhere else for employment, cause benefits may be better. Since I've been in the county, last April, I fell in my house, I wound up having to have eighteen stitches, they wouldn't let me drive the truck to the hospital, I wanted to, but had to, had to call the police department out, not the police department, the fire department, and then, as recent as about three weeks ago, my neighbor was burning some trash, it got away from him, and we wound up with four trucks out there between the two residences to knock this thing down. Response was very quick, if there, we continue to see this erosion in our services and we start closing facilities, it's going to change my insurance status, it's going to change response time, and it's just me. The county's first responsibility is to citizen's safety, and we're doing a great job of that, and so I think the first consideration should be there before we move on to other things. I guess it concerns me when I see us buying airports and golf courses, but we can't take care of our public servants the way they should be. Riding down Jonesboro Road, and, correct me please if I'm wrong, I see trees going up along the road, and they look good, and we want our county to look good. I just don't think they're as important as taking care of our public servants. So I think we need to pay more attention to them, I think we need to pay them better, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. The next person who has signed up for public comment is John Dewberry, one of our local pastors, ten ten South Bethany Road in Locust Grove, and he is here to speak to us about the police budget. I almost feel an altar call coming up.
Thank you, BJ, I just want to share briefly with the Commissioners that the importance behind us, making sure that we look at our budget lines for the police department and fire department are critical, and I'm just straightforward with this, if you didn't think it was critical, you wouldn't have these guys standing here. Bottom line, you know it's important for us to be safe, do what's right, make sure you look at the numbers, but also look at your families, these guys are not just protecting us, they're responsible for protecting you. So let's look at the numbers, be realistic, and take care of these guys.
Thank you. The next speaker that has signed up is Pastor Paul Leslie, seventeen twenty-one Highway eighty-one West in McDonough. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, board, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I serve as a pastor at McDonough Christian Church, and the late Bill Morris was one of our parishioners, it's not my intention to take up where he left off, I know he could be a burr under the saddle for this board, but I am here today to speak on behalf of the public servants of our county, they do an incredible job. When I came to Henry County, we used to tell people to get to our church, you get off I seventy-five, turn to the west, we're the first thing you come to. Now, when you refer to our area on Jonesboro Road, if you're a uniformed officer, they call it the high crime district, that troubles me greatly. We have an incredible law enforcement, both the sheriff's office and the police department do an incredible job, and they speak for themselves. It is difficult when you spend time with these officers, what the board has already labored over today with this code enforcement earlier, I happened to be on a ride along on that night last fall, when there was that party at the warehouse, and I was with the second officer responding, and what these men and women, what they're willing to go into, standing in harm's way every time they come to work, is a very challenging situation. You have a difficult task of trying to discern who gets cut and who doesn't get cut. The growth of our county has been phenomenal, I remember back in the nineties when Sheriff Chafin used to say, more people, more crime, and he was exactly right, and with that, our departments have grown, our sheriff's office has grown, but it's time we really look at how we can take care of those who serve in the public arenas. I think that our sheriff's office, our police department, our fire department, they're all run with individuals of high integrity, and they do everything they can to minimize the cost, but you want to talk about something disheartening, get into an officer's car with him, and he has no laptop, so all of his work has to be done back at the station. We need to do everything we can to empower these men and women to be able to do their jobs successfully. If we make additional cuts in our public servants area, eventually there will be a public outcry, not initially, because it takes a while for the crime statistics to surface, it takes a while for us to realize what has happened. Many, many law officers and people, personnel of the police department in particular, have transitioned away, especially since two thousand and eight, the numbers are staggering. We've had over a hundred people, a hundred people have left the police department since two thousand and eight, now they leave for various reasons, and there are a lot of men and women who serve this county well, and they do it because it is a calling, it is a passion, they're not in it for the money, but a lot have left because they have to look out for their families, and if we don't establish a pay scale, the men and women that we ask to serve are unable to make long-term plans for their family. You all have stepped into a position of leadership, and I challenge you to think about how we can take care of those who were called upon to protect us. I want you to think about this as I close. We have a lot of great people that work for Henry County, in all different departments, we have an excellent county, but the thing that is different about our public servants, on Christmas Eve, when a call comes out, they're going to be there. On Thanksgiving Day, if there's a need, our public servants are going to be there. They don't have the opportunity to work regular day shifts like so many of our other departments, and so my challenge to you, this board, is to think about our public And so, my challenge to you, this Board, is to think about our public servants, think about those who stand in harm's way and do everything that they can to protect us. Like Brother Ralph, I've got a long way to go, but I've spent over two-hundred-and-eighty hours volunteering as a chaplain with the Henry County Police Department. We have great men and women. Let's don't see them leave. Let's do everything we can to protect the citizens of Henry County and stand behind those who are always willing to stand in harm, stand in harm's way. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. All right, the final speaker that has signed up for public comment is Pastor Stan Barong of 536, looks like Heathmore Drive?
Yes, ma'am.
McDonough.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair, and also Commissioners. It's a privilege to stand before you today, and first of all, I want to thank you for what you do for our community. We encourage our church, I'm the pastor of Glen Haven Baptist Church, and privileged to be the senior pastor there, and we encourage our church to pray for our community leaders. We know the job you have is, is an awesome responsibility. You have to make decisions that you can't please everybody, and you know that better than I do. I pastor a growing congregation, and it's hard to please all of them. You are leading a county of almost well, well over two-hundred-thousand people, and so it's impossible to please all of them. But we've all chosen to live in this county because it drew us here for a number of reasons. Our church came here in 2002, and we came here because a lot of our active membership was in this area. They moved from Decatur, Georgia, where our church was, to this area because they came to an area that was safe, an area that was family-oriented and family-friendly. And this county has continued to have that reputation. But because of the financial and economic situation we're in today, you've had to make some serious decisions on making cuts in a lot of areas, and one of those areas certainly has been the public safety area. I'm also privileged to be a chaplain with the Henry County Police Department as well, being able to have ride-alongs and be able to know them and be able to have some knowledge of some things that go on there. I know that the men and women that make up our public safety areas and the, as firefighters, as police officers, they have hopes and dreams like all of us. They want to live in a, in a community where they can work and live and raise their families here and where they can have a future here. They can grow here. Unfortunately, we've had, as you've heard, many individuals in the public safety area that have had to leave their jobs here to go to other areas because of just the primary needs of meeting the needs of their family, of being able to have some kind of a, a hope that there's going to be a pay increase. We've got officers now that have been here for years, and if an officer starts today, and a guy who's been here five years ago, five years on the staff is making the same thing the guy who's hired today is, they have no real hope except for some type of promotion of a, or so forth to be able to get any raise. They need that, they deserve that, they ought to have that. They got to have hope for a future in this area. We see that the possibility of fire stations closing, that affects our insurance rates. If something's going to go up, I'd rather something go up that would secure our public safety area, they could have raises. If I'm going to pay an increase somewhere, I promise you, I'd rather pay it in some type of tax or something else that could fund public safety and make sure they have a future and they have a hope that they're going to be able to get some, some pay raises on a regular basis so they have a, they can tell their families that what they're doing is not only a sacrificial job, and it is, but also is a job that also is going to help meet their primary needs of their family. We cannot afford to continue to lose individuals with experience. I don't want to fly in an airplane or drive a car that's built by an inexperienced mechanic or engineer. I don't want to have a surgery done by a physician that's inexperienced in surgery. I don't want to live in a house that's been built by a home builder that's inexperienced. And I don't think we can afford to live in a community that we continue to lose experienced people in our public safety area and have those areas then being run and led by people that are inexperienced. We've got great men and women who are very dedicated, committed, loyal, talented individuals in these areas. We want to do everything we can to encourage you to make some hard decisions, to make some tough decisions, but do what you can to give our people in public safety a hope for a future in this county. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman?
I'd like to make a comment. Glen Haven Baptist Church is my home church, and I just want to make this comment that they, our leaders, they don't just talk the talk, they walk the walk. Over the last eight years or so, they've raised well over a hundred thousand dollars for the police and fire department, breathing apparatuses for the fire department, vests for the police officers, a number of different functions that they've done for public safety. And I just, you know, I know that there's a lot of people that watch this program, and I want them to understand that they, that I can't speak for the other churches because this is my home church and this is where I go, and I'm sure other churches do things for public safety, but for our leadership to get up and speak on public safety from that standpoint, I just wanted to be sure that they understand the people that are watching this program, that, like I said, they don't just talk the talk, they walk the walk. They do, they do appreciate and they do the things that they've said they've done. So, I just want to make that comment for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Holder, do you have a comment?
I do. Certainly, the comments that I'm going to make is not taking one thing away from public safety. I hear the, the support for public safety. Public safety is most important, but it's not the only important thing. I know comments were made here this morning about driving a car that was less than perfect by, by a mechanic who was less than qualified. What about driving on a road that's, that's being maintained by less-than-qualified people? Our DOT, the other side, is part of our responsibility, but remember, public safety, we got to be responsible for that too. Another comment was made about being at Christmas holidays, night, whatever, being called out. If we have inclement weather, storms, what have you, I believe our DOT has to respond. So, my point is, I'm not taking, I don't want it to sound like I am refuting what you're saying, because what you're saying is exactly right, but it is not the only issue that we are faced with. Public safety is not the only emergency crews that we have that have to respond in emergency situations. We have others too, and I just want to make that very clear, that as important as public safety is, and that is one of the first main thing that this Board of Commissioners is charged with, the public health, safety and welfare of our citizens. I think everybody on this Board is very aware of that. And I know comments were made about buying airports and golf courses. I'm not going to get into that today, but I can certainly talk to you about that and the reasoning behind some of that, be happy to. But public safety, as important as it is, there are other issues that are facing this Board as well. So, with that, I just wanted to make that comment, and I, before, when we go to the comments by the county attorney, I'd like to make a comment to our county manager.
Okay. Does any other Board member have a comment they'd like to make?
All right, I'm, I'm going to make a few comments because I, I feel like I need to. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming here, speaking on behalf of public safety, and I think most people know how I feel about public safety. My husband retired after thirty years with the city of Atlanta, and my son is a police officer with Henry County, and I might add that he was on the force before I was on this Board. We just celebrated my granddaughter's second birthday last week. Guess who got called away and missed his daughter's second birthday? My son, because he was called out to an incident on the north end of the county, and it happens quite often. That's part of what goes along with the job. Thank God for our police and fire, our 911. Without them, our county would be in terrible, terrible condition. They do deserve the step raises. I've been a big supporter of that since I've been in office, and we are losing them, and it's putting the county at risk. When you have an average age of an officer on our force at four years, that puts the county in a huge liability situation. It's dangerous for the officers, it's dangerous for the citizens, and we've invested thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in training these officers, and we're sending them to other jurisdictions, and it's costing the county in the long run, and it's something we, as a Board, are going to have to have a discussion about. There's a lot of, there's a lot of rumors and speculation that always go around about the decisions that the Board has made. Why are you buying land? Why are you buying this? Some of the things that I'm hearing are land purchases that go back five, six, seven years. The last time I looked, there was not a recession five, six, seven years ago. We made decisions then based on the needs of this county, trying to keep an eye toward the future, and trying to make sure that future Boards are not scrambling to catch up, as many of us on this Board have tried to do the time that we've been in office as being one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. The trees along the side of the road, I can promise you, that is not money that's coming out of our general fund. That is grant money that has been secured by the state, from the state of Georgia, a gateway grant. A lot of the road projects you see splopped program, thank God for the splopped program, otherwise we wouldn't have the park improvements and the road improvements that you see going on in the county that are so desperately needed now. So, there are a lot of funding sources that are not general fund that enable us to do some of the things to improve the quality of life and, and just deal with the frustrations that our citizens face every day as they travel along these roads, and we're thankful that we have impact fees and things like that to help, help us to provide for some of the needs. So, I just wanted to kind of touch on a couple of those things because I know how speculation and rumor gets started, and, and I'm even going to speak to the airport issue too because I feel like that's important. Henry County is, has been considered a bedroom community. Seventy percent of our budget comes from, from residential properties, and as y'all know, in 2009, we had a budget of a hundred and thirty-two million dollars. That budget today, same, same county, same number of departments, same needs, our budget today is one hundred and twelve million dollars, a twenty million dollar difference than just a few years ago because of declining property values. No fault of anyone here. We have thirty thousand more citizens in this county that we're having to provide for with twenty million dollars less than we had just a few years ago. I want to commend every member, every staff member of this county for what they have done to tighten the belt, to continue to provide services in spite of the fact that we have had to cut, 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 cut and cut. We're at the point now, there's probably no blood left in any of our veins because it has been cut to that point. And so, yes, we are faced with a very tough decision coming up with this upcoming budget and what we're going to do with it. And this input that we got here this morning from each one of you is very important to us and critical as we make our decisions, because at the end of the day, we're making the decisions, but this county belongs to the citizens, this budget belongs to the citizens, and we need to hear from you. What is your expectation for us moving forward? And so, it's important that we have that feedback. So, for those who are watching today that did not get a chance to come in and to have a comment this morning, we welcome your emails, we welcome your suggestions, and we want to hear from you because we want to keep Henry County a great place to live, a safe community, and, you know, a good quality of life, not only for us, but for our children and future generations, and the decisions that we make today are going to impact that future. We're going to have to work diligently to bring more jobs and industry to this county. We have got to lay the groundwork for what it's going to take to bring those industries here. The airport was a small piece of that, but it was a huge piece, and we believe that that is going to help us to attract the corporations that are looking for airports to land their aircraft in. And I also want to say from that standpoint, seventeen point seven million dollar purchase price, the FAA paid fifteen million dollars for that airport, and that airport today is turning a very small but a modest profit, and we know that going forward that that airport is going to pay for itself, and we have the numbers, and I'd be glad to share that with anybody that has a question about that. But it's all part of trying to do something to keep us from depending on our, our property owners, our homeowners, to pay for their services, to get some businesses in here to help with that. And during the State of the County address, and I'm, this is the last comment I'm going to make on this, one of the things that I pointed out was how critical those businesses are to this county. South Point Mall, without that new addition over there, pays the equivalent of over two-hundred and something homes just for that one development. So, you can see how having businesses locate helps our economy. Atlanta Motor Speedway pays taxes the equivalent to over eight hundred average-priced homes in our county. We've got to focus on getting more business and industry in here. They bring the tax base in, they don't add children's to, our children to our school system, and they use less services, so they're not calling on our police and fire as often as residential property. So, all the things that we do as a Board, we're looking at the big picture. It's not just one piece here and one piece here. We're trying to take care of the needs of our community here today, but always keep an eye to the future of how we can make this county stronger and better in the years to come. But again, I appreciate all your comments and, you know, I thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules, and thank you for what you do for our police department and our fire department, our sheriff's department. It is, it is really appreciated, and we probably don't tell you enough.
Did anybody else have a comment they'd like to make? Okay, if not, I'm going to move on to the county manager comments. Anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney, anything?
No, ma'am.
We have our upcoming meetings and events, Friday, April the 6th, and Monday, April the 9th, all county offices will be closed. One is for Good Friday, one is a furlough day. Monday, April 16th at 9:00 a.m., Tuesday, April the 17th at 6:30 p.m., we have regular commission meetings. Mr. Holder, did you want to make a comment?
I do, in fact, I want to direct it to the county manager. I've had several contacts about, in this budget process, to survey the employees about going, using four ten-hour days rather than the five eights. I would like to see that done, to get a feedback from you. We, we're on the energy conservation mode to where if the building could be closed three days in a row, whether it be a Monday or a Friday, and people adjust to their schedules, the hours of service would not change, you'd still have the same forty-hour service, the issue would be closed one day. I'm not, I'm not really promoting this, it's been brought to me to pursue it, we, we've talked about that several months ago, and I'd just like for you to get a survey of the employees and see what their comments are, and also do some study on what kind of cost savings we could have by closing the office one day a week. And obviously, that would not pertain to public safety. Public safety is, is different because they cannot do that. You can't go a day without having them. But anything other than that, and I think you're aware of that, but if you would do that and let the Board know, I would appreciate it.
If there's no further business to come before the Board this morning, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.